Okay, it is four o'clock. We will call the July 27th Salina City Commission meeting to order. I would ask staff for confirmation that the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided.
Yes.
Thank you. With that, we will have roll call.
Mayor Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Franz.
Here.
Commissioner Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Okay. With that, I would ask all that are able to please stand for the pleasure of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, we will move to awards and proclamations.
Item 3.1, a proclamation honoring the life and legacy of John R. Lewis. Sandy Beverley will read the proclamation.
Whereas each and every one of us involved in the constant battle for civil rights and justice for all owes a huge debt of gratitude to the late John Lewis, yes, even here in Salina, Kansas, we are in debt for the life of this humble man. Whereas he was often called one of the most courageous persons the civil rights movement ever produced, John Lewis dedicated his life to protecting human rights, securing civil liberties, and building what he calls the beloved community in America. By 1963, Lewis was dubbed one of the big six leaders of the civil rights movement, and at the age of 23, he was an architect and a keynote speaker at the historic march on Washington in August 1963. Along with Hosea Williams, John Lewis led over 600 peaceful orderly protesters across the Edmund Pettit's Bridge in Selma, Alabama, on March 7, 1965. They intended to march from Selma to Montgomery to demonstrate the need for voting rights in the state. Despite more than 40 arrests, physical attacks, and serious injuries, John Lewis remained a devoted advocate of nonviolent philosophy. John Lewis went on to become a United States Congressman, and he served as U.S. Representative of Georgia's 5th Congressional District since 1986. Lewis was a member of the influential House Budget Committee and House Ways and Means Committee, where he served on the Subcommittee on Health until his death. Congressman Lewis served as a senior chief deputy Democratic Whip and sat in a direct line of succession to the number-two Democratic leadership position in the House. John Lewis is the recipient of many numerous awards, too many to list, but they included the prestigious Martin Luther King Jr. Nonviolent Peace Prize. He received the NAACP Spengard Medal in 2002 and the NAACP Chairman's Award in 2020. And whereas if we know anything about our dear friend John Lewis, he wanted us to continue the battle for full participation in a democracy that he began long ago with other civil rights icons, icons such as C.W. Vivian, Dr. CT Vivian, Elijah Cummings, and they were both civil rights warriors that we recently lost. On November 3, we can and must honor our beloved John Lewis, Dr. Vivian, and Elijah Cummings by casting our ballot and ensuring that our vote is counted up and down the ballot. Whereas it is recognized that John Lewis was a national treasure and a civil rights hero for the ages, we are deeply saddened by his passing but profoundly grateful for his immense contributions to justice. He used every waking moment of his 80 years to push this country toward more representative democracy and left behind a remarkable model. It is up to us to pick up his mantle and carry on, and we urge the entire community of Salina to join us. As people of all colors, ages, sex, and disability are in the streets seeking justice, we urge all that can to speak louder, stay a little longer, and to honor the best warrior for democracy that our nation has ever known. Whereas on July 17, 2020, we lost the earthly presence of John Lewis, he leaves behind a roadmap of a life lived for justice, righteousness, grace, and true forgiveness. We're challenged to live up to the words of encouragement from John Lewis himself when he said, "Do not get lost in the sea of despair. Be hopeful. Remain optimistic." Our struggle is not the struggle of a day, a week, a month, or a year. It is the struggle of a lifetime. Never ever be afraid to make some noise and get in good trouble, necessary trouble. We mourn the passing, but his work, wisdom, and sacrifice is the bridge in which our efforts are built, to you, to build the beloved community. Thank you.
And are there any special events or anything scheduled in Salina to celebrate John's life?
Not at this time.
Not at this time?
We just wanted to do this in recognition of the fact that right now, the nation and the world is mourning the passing of this man.
Yes. Okay. And I have a copy of the proclamation here for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. With that, that will lead us to Citizens Forum. This is an opportunity for anyone to come forward to just bring a topic that's not on the agenda. Please, if you come forward, please state your name and address. Is there anyone at this time that would like to come forward?
Joan Ratzle of Salina. I've mentioned this before, but I want to say it again, maybe in a little different way, that we have an ethics policy. In 2017, it was updated to include training, annual training for all board members, citizen volunteers, and so on. And as far as I'm aware, that has not occurred universally. Not every board member that has been selected to serve has received that training. And I think it's very important that everyone who serves, all of us, have a good understanding of that ethics policy, what it means, how to carry it out. I don't think that anyone who has not had that training should serve. Serving as, on a citizen board is a voluntary matter, but it seems to me that the policy says that every member shall receive that training, so I'm asking you, as a governing body, to assure that that happens. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We will look into that.
I'm Jack Will in Cairo. I live at 707 Highland. And I'm here to plant the seed of an idea. Perhaps it's always already been suggested, but my notion is to remove the Army tank, the N-60 Army tank that's in front of the Memorial Hall. At a minimum, it sends a complete wrong message about peace on earth, and it's, in my opinion, it's unsightly, and it's consistent with the notion of moving, you know, making every place a nicer place to be. So, thank you.
Anyone else? If not, we will move to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of July 20, 2020.
Okay. We just have the one item. Do I have a...
We approve the minutes of July 20, 2020. Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the minutes of the July 20, 2020 meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. As we move into administration, I'd like to ask my fellow commissioners, I think it would maybe make sense to move 7.5 to follow 7.3 and move 7.4 down. If there is, if I have consensus among the commission on that...
It's aligned with me.
Since those have something to do with each other, so, okay. We will then move 7.5 to follow 7.3, so. Okay. With that, we will move into administration.
Item 7.1, second reading, ordinance number 20-11024, amending Chapter 35 of the city code by adding a new Article 14 to Chapter 35, establishing standards for the construction, maintenance, and modification of small cell wireless facilities in the public right-of-way and repealing Section 42-70 of the Salina Code.
Commissioners, this is the second reading, but there's two modifications that I want to call to your attention. They were both discussed when you heard it on first reading, and staff indicated that these modifications will be made. But the first is the definition of the small cell facility deployment is modified to clarify that includes other wireless support structures and not just utility poles. And then the other modification was to reduce the number of photo simulations that have to be submitted with an application from three to one, and there was a redlined version of that attached to your staff report, so you can see those two changes called out.
Do we have any questions for staff?
I guess I have one question, and maybe I wasn't paying close enough attention last week, but I didn't recall the reduction of photo simulations as being one of the things that we talked about, and it very well may have been, but it seems like, I understand that U.S. Cellular doesn't want to do three photo simulations, but I think that, given the fact that we could have these going up in neighborhoods all over, I think it would probably help all of us, including people whose neighborhoods, whose businesses may be affected, to see how that's going to impact their environment.
If you go to Section 35, 296, on page four of the ordinance, the initial edit is to require a photo simulation, but there is language that creates the discretion for city manager, which references to city manager or to the city manager or their delegate. So, staff could require additional photos if the site warranted it.
I guess my request to you would be that we do make those requests of someone who, you know, a company that wants to install wireless equipment in our community. I mean, I understand that their business model may not be compatible with always providing tons and tons of photo simulations, but I just would hope that we do seek out that information to see what kind of impact it has.
I hadn't thought much about it, but hearing you raise the issue, I guess if I was trying to put a support structure in a iffy location, I would take the photo that would show, least show, what I would expect to be the objection. And when it said three simulations, did the city managers still have the right to request additional? I just can't remember what they...
Yeah, I think the discretionary language was added in response to limiting it to a single photo.
Because I guess, depending on the view that you get, you may or may not know if another view would show things differently.
And if there's additional equipment, depending on what equipment they're proposing, whether it's a small attachment to a pole or as a control cabinet, I think those would factor into whether additional photos would be needed as well.
The thing I can't remember, are those locations advertised, like, you know, zoning change, this property is up for rezon, is there a sign that goes up on a proposed location so that the immediate neighbors would know that that site is being considered?
I don't believe so. Part of the discussion last week was, at the state and federal level, they've given, they've taken away quite a bit of authority on the part of cities and granted quite a bit of discretion to franchise phone companies.
If I might weigh in, my recollection of the discussion is that because of the timetables imposed by the state and FCC is, we simply do not have the time to run them through the same kind of notice and preparation that we do for like a zoning reap, zoning application, and that this is largely going to be driven by staff review. There just isn't the timeframe available, that's as I remember it.
Right. And not so much to have our usual formal hearing process, but if, you know, a little stick goes up, proposed pole, if a neighbor saw a reason that that location was not good that we might not be aware of, they'd have maybe 72 hours to call the city manager.
I guess that would be my follow-up question. I mean, how does that process going to work? I don't mean to put you on the spot, but let's say I'm U.S. Cellular, and I'm like, I really want to put a cell tower on this residential corner. What happens next? I mean, because I understand with the time constraints that the property owners might not be notified, although I just think that sounds terrible, because I'd be certainly surprised if I saw a cabinet or something go up in my front yard and not have any, or in the right-of-way, I know, not the front yard, the right-of-way, without having any notice, so.
Right. In part, that was the reason for placement on property lines, but understandably so, that's still an issue. In all honesty, I think the support staff that could have better answered your questions were here for first reading. We had an attorney from Clarkmize and Linville involved, as well as the zoning administrator, so if you have additional questions, I'd suggest you postpone, and we'll reschedule.
Because it seemed to me like we had limited ability to deal with, I mean... Yeah. And I just don't know how that plays into the notice, and it kind of depends on, you know, if I were a property owner and they slap a pole up in the middle of my front yard, I'm going to be a little put out by that. You know, if it goes on an existing pole, that's something different, and depending on where it's placed, if it's placed to the side of the property line or on a corner, maybe not so much, but it's, you know, I'd like to presume that the cellular companies would like to maintain a positive public image and would not place these where they were offensive. But that's a lot of trust to extend from now until the end of time, you know.
And it's also a question of the limits of our authority, but Mr. Andrews here, he may be able to better answer your question about the notice process.
Between the, I think there's one way to describe the behavior of the cellular providers, and that is aggressive. And the other thing that they're quite effective at is lobbying the Federal Communications Commission and the legislatures of the various states. So between the legislation that has been passed by the Kansas Legislature and the FCC decisions, our local discretion is very limited, and we're basically limited to things that are objective criteria and not things that are subjective. And so the ordinance revisions were an attempt to have as much objective criteria in there as possible and to avoid the situation where anybody is placing a brand-new support structure in front of somebody's front door or an equipment box. And so the ordinance calls for new structures to be placed either at the common lot line between two dwellings or on a corner lot on the secondary, non-front yard side. And the same would go for businesses to not allow the poles to be set that would either interfere with or obstruct the visibility of their front entrance. But there is no, because of the compressed timelines that are imposed on cities to review and approve these applications, there is no, there's no opportunity for a public notice, an opportunity to be heard, because the timeframes for the review process don't allow for that.
Do you, as a courtesy, notify the affected property owner or the joining people?
Well, I mean, part of it is an education process for staff and for commissioners and for others to try to educate the public that the area between their sidewalk and the curb is public right-of-way. And so while it's perceived that way, technically, it's not correct that somebody has placed a pole or an equipment box in my front yard, because they couldn't place it on your property, but the ordinance allows them to place it within the public right-of-way. And so there really isn't an opportunity for any notice to be provided. And one of the reasons that we were recommending repeal, or repeal of the Section 4270 was because Section 4270 was in the zoning code and had all sorts of notice and process for neighboring property owners, and if we tried to utilize that, that ordinance would probably be legally struck down as violating state law and the FCC regulations. So that is why we rewrote the code so that it was an administrative process, and then we tried to be as prescriptive and objective as we could in terms of where they go. And my experience is that the providers don't want to alienate people. They don't, they want to look for locations that everybody can agree to, but if I were to deny a permit based on some subjective criteria or deny it because the neighbor objected to it, I imagine that that denial would be legally challenged in some way. So we're only able to apply the objective criteria that we have put in the code.
Mr. Andrews, is there anything that in federal guidelines or state law that would prohibit us from getting three photo simulations? I mean, is there, is there a, I mean, because that, to me, seems a pretty objective, you know, to request, to make a telecommunications company, so I just think that that might help reveal issues to staff so that you can make these decisions administratively, or you can take a look at it and say, wow, that's going to, that may cause some problems, I need to reach out to the property owner or whatever.
Well, their assertion to myself and to Mr. Martin was that requiring three was overkill, but we're not, we're not, there's nothing that compels us that says we can't require three. And my point to them was, in some situations, given what's around it, not receiving three might require staff to have to go out and view it ourselves and take our own photographs, which defeats the purpose. And so I was very clear with, so the compromise, which you are free to agree or disagree with, was that there would be a single one submitted, and then if we felt we need additional ones to determine what was around it or to determine compliance, that we could request that. But the original, the original draft would have required three photo simulations to be submitted from different lines of sight so that staff could get a perspective on what's around it. So that is, that is a discretionary item for you. We adjusted it at the request of the cellular providers.
Does our staff go out and look at each site before the final decision meeting?
We, I can tell you that in the case of Ideatech, which has about 30-some locations in the community, we looked at the site, but the other thing that we did, which turned, for us, turned out to be effective, was that we had a representative from Ideatech, a representative from Westar, myself, and city engineer Dan Stack, and we put ourselves in a room with Google Earth and then went and looked at every, they had some 30-odd locations, and we just went using Google Earth and went through and looked at them one by one by one, because if you don't at least do that, then you're going to have to go out in the field, and sometimes there's things that a photograph doesn't show, depending on the angle it's taken. You don't want, the idea is that if we have multiple poles, that they're evenly spaced. We don't want to have a situation where someone unnecessarily puts up an additional pole that's in close proximity to another one. So if, if the photo that's submitted doesn't reveal all that, then, to me, it defeats the purpose to have to go out in the field or for staff to confirm that themselves. And so that, that was my counter to their request that we not require three photo simulations.
Mr. Andrews, I presume that they are required to submit a site drawing of some sort as to where they're going to place this, along with what is surrounding it?
Yes. And the photo simulation, basically, they're asked to take a photo of the setting and then superimpose either, in my experience, about a third of the Ideatech installations were new poles. And another third was put on existing Westar poles, and then another third, the existing Westar pole was not adequate, so they took a new pole and put it in the location of the existing pole, so the net result was not really noticeable. But it was, it's the one-third of cases where a new pole goes up. And the best example I can point you to is at the bend across the old channel from the Y as you're approaching Kenwood Cove, there's a pole there with a street light on it, and that pole is an Ideatech support structure that has a street light on it, but it's owned by a cellular provider, not by Westar, not by the city.
I guess my point is, if they have a site, a site drawing, and we can look at that either through our overhead photos or through Google Earth, does that suffice as a replacement or as a supplement to knowing when to require additional photos if we only require one?
Yeah. If we, if we get one and we go down through our criteria and our locational preferences and the reviewer can't tell from that one photo, I would prefer to ask them to provide us with additional views as opposed to sending staff out to do it themselves. us with additional views as opposed to sending staff out to do it themselves.
Just out of curiosity, how often are the Google Earth photos redone?
I want to say our current photos, the city was driven in 2017.
The reason I'm asking is, if it's like every three years, then new poles could be missed?
The, the good news is on our, the city's aerial photography that we just did, we just re-flew the city in the spring of 2020. And so all of the aerial photos that we have now available to us are 2020 photos. And that, that's extremely helpful. Because the previous ones were 2017, and some places, the 2017 photos show an empty field, and in 2020, it's got 25 houses on it. So it's helpful to get those updated.
Yeah. I guess I would, okay with the, the changes made. You know, you can do what you want with three pictures also, to make them to your advantage. And I think there's certain, you know, certain times, this is going to be a slam dunk for city staff, and then there's going to be other times, they're going to have to either go to the appraiser's mapping or, or Google Earth or actually go out and look at it. So it's still going to be at the discretion of, of staff, and they have the ability to approve with conditions or to deny the application, so.
The, I mean, I don't, I don't think there's any doubt about it that some of the providers trying to deploy their systems have been frustrated with various local requirements or varying local requirements between communities. And so their, their solution has been to go to the FCC and go to state legislatures to try to remove what they perceive as barriers to implementing their, their deployment of their facilities. And so one of the reasons that we felt that we had to rewrite it was that our present ordinance is not really workable or defensible. And so we came up with this. I don't, I agree, it's not been completely balanced, in my experience. I've never had a ordinance that's been so scrutinized and come back with so many comments from so many people in the wireless industry. But that's, that's one of the reasons why it's, it's taken to this point into the year, because every time Mr. Martin and I thought we had a final version, there was another comment that came in. And I can't, I can't promise that there won't be some objection to what is before you on second reading. But it has been reviewed and scrutinized by all the providers and their legal teams and their others. And we have had pre-application meetings with U.S. Cellular. And I was encouraged by what they were proposing, that there weren't, they seemed to be very conscientious about impacts that their facilities were having on property owners. But I just, with the time constraints that they put, there's, having notice and public hearings, and that just did not seem to be something that was workable within the timeframes that had been put upon us.
Staff feels comfortable that you, you're adequately protected in what you are allowed to do with this?
Yeah. They're, they're still not happy with our height limitation, but we did not budge on that. They're, the cellular providers wanted to have a 50-foot height limit for new poles. And we said that we simply weren't going to support anything that tall in existing neighborhoods, and other communities have not. Some communities have adopted the 50-foot limit, but every single facility that I've reviewed, not a single one of them is over 34 feet in height. And I don't think it's justified to give them the ability to have a 50-foot pole by right, so the ordinance limits it to 35 feet and 40 feet in circumstances where there's taller poles around.
Just to be clear, our process and our discretion have been limited by state and federal mandates. So to say that staff is satisfied, we are convinced that this is compliant with the playing field that we're playing on, and it, we can implement it as proposed. But it has, as Mr. Andrews described, limited discretion and authority. On the basis, and I think we mentioned it when we talked about it in first reading, they've made the argument that this is essentially an essential service that needs implementation and local deviations deter them from being able to implement. And that seems to have been persuasive at the state and federal level.
Yeah. The other thing, and you, you on your next week's agenda have a request coming forward from U.S. Cellular for a master license agreement. But one of the things that we pointed out there was that Ideatech, which was the first company to come to Salina, the city commission negotiated a franchise agreement with Ideatech, and we collect franchise fees from them. But the state legislature passed a bill that prohibited cities from requiring franchise agreements with cellular providers. So that, that tool was taken away from communities as well. So there's, there's just a lot happening at the state and federal level that has constrained our abilities, what we can do locally. We can still require permits. I'm just saying that we have very little discretion that if I were to review a permit and it met most of the objective criteria, and I said, I'm going to deny it because I don't think the people living there will like it, I'm not sure that decision would, would be upheld. So, no, I can't say that staff is completely thrilled with this, because it, we are constrained about what we can do. But it, if we're going to get requests, then we have to have something objective to review them against. And we have done our best efforts, and we've reviewed what other communities have done. And almost every community's had to rewrite their, their codes to make them somewhat less restrictive and to take the public, public comment and notification aspect out of it.
Any other questions for staff? If not, is there any public comment? Okay. With that, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mayor Hoppick, I'm going to take a stab at this, because I'm going with option number two, approve ordinance number 20-11024 on second reading with the following amendment to Section 35-296B under photo simulations. And the wording is as follows. For additions to existing infrastructure, the applicant shall submit a photo simulation from a reasonable line-of-site location near the proposed small cell facility site. The photo simulation must be taken from the viewpoint of nearby pedestrian and vehicular traffic. For new installations of infrastructure, the applicant shall submit photo simulations from at least three reasonable line-of-site locations near the proposed small cell facility site. The photo simulations must be taken from the viewpoint of nearby pedestrian and vehicular traffic. The angle of photo simulation separation must be at least 90 degrees or greater and provide a full-profile depiction. For both additions to existing infrastructure and new installation of infrastructure, the city manager may request additional photo simulations from other line-of-site locations if the city manager determines that additional information about the conditions in the vicinity of the proposed small cell facility site is needed in order to evaluate an application.
Second. Okay. We got a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 20-11024 on second reading. I have one question for Mr. Andrews. Will this change have to be approved by the cellular, by the state or by anyone?
No.
This is just ours.
If I explain to Commissioner Hodges, that language there is completely discretionary.
Discretionary, okay.
You, it's up to you to describe what is your minimum seminal requirements. They, they were not contending that they, they thought that that violated any federal or state provision. They thought it was, it was overkill on staff's part to request three photos. And there's cases where it may not be overkill, so I'm completely comfortable with that amendment.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion, a second to approve ordinance number 20-11024 with amendments. We will have, with, because of the amendments, can we still do this second reading, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So we will do roll call.
Mayor Hoppick.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner France.
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Nay.
Okay. That passes four to one. Okay.
Ask Commissioner Hodges to share her language with the city clerk, so that we can get that properly incorporated before we do publication, so.
I will. I'll, I'll give her my notes, but I may have to refer to the video. I just basically incorporated both, but thank you.
That's the reason I did not try to repeat it.
I got the gist of it, and from staff's perspective, that works perfectly well for us. But we just want to make sure that was a lot of verbiage, so that we get it recorded on second reading correctly. So, thank you.
Okay. That will lead us to 7.2.
Item 7.2, authorize publication of the notice of budget hearing for the 2021 budget, which sets August 10th as the date of the public hearing on the 2021 budget and establishes the maximum limits of the 2021 budget.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Tara Sauber, Deputy Finance Director. Ms. Pack is out of the office today, so I will provide the background for this item. Kansas state statutes require that a formal public hearing on the proposed budget be held and that a public notice be published at least 10 days prior to such hearing date. The notice of budget hearing will include the date, time, and location for the hearings, as well as establish the maximum limits of the 2021 budget and the maximum amount of property tax to be levied. The 2021 proposed budget establishes the maximum mill levy at 30.697 mills. This mill levy will allocate the following amounts. General fund, $10,737,173. Bond and interest fund, $3,62,827, for a total of $13.8 million. Next steps in adopting the 2021 budget include August 10th, public hearing and first reading of ordinance to adopt the 2021 budget; August 17th, second reading of ordinance to adopt the 2021 budget; adopt position classification and salary schedule; and adopt the 2021 comprehensive fee schedule. August 25th, adopted budget must be submitted to the county, and later in the fall, will adopt the 2021 to 2025 capital improvement plan and water and wastewater rates. After publication, these amounts may not be increased, however, they can be reduced. Recommended action today is to authorize publication of the notice of budget hearing for the 2021 budget, which sets August 10th as the date for the public hearing on the 2021 budget and establishes the maximum limits of the 2021 budget. And I will stand for any questions.
Questions for staff?
I don't think I have any questions for Ms. Sauber, but I did reach out to city manager Mike Skregg in terms of something that we had discussed last week. Commissioner France brought it up. And I'd also like to thank Commissioner France for preparing a really awesome spreadsheet. I hope it goes into the online packet that shows where Salina ranks in terms of property taxes, sales taxes, and combined taxes. But at any rate, Commissioner France had brought up an interesting idea about reducing our health insurance fund balance to $2 million, which is the target balance, since we're sitting at about $3 million now. And I didn't know if we'd heard back from Charles Worth.
Not that I know of. The inquiry is in, but I don't know that, and I think what really needs to happen is we need to sit down and look at kind of our history of balance month-to-month, our fluctuations in our claims history, and then I think we can bring you a recommendation. My intention would be that between now and renewal, we could, could look at what our renewal rates look like, what the percentage increases might be, and, and bring to you kind of a plan of annually how we can look at that balance and address it more proactively than we have in the past.
So you wouldn't anticipate that occurring before we adopt the budget and have the public hearing? Would that, that's not going to happen before that point?
Yeah. I don't know that we'll have that analysis done. The budget does include a 4%, an assumption of a 4% cost increase. That doesn't necessarily mean a 4% increase to employees, but that's, there is a placeholder in the event that rates go up. But we wouldn't, that doesn't, we haven't an opportunity to address the fund balance outside of the budget hearing.
Any other questions or comments for staff? Is there any comment from the public? Okay. If not, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mayor Hoppick. I move to authorize publication of the notice of budget hearing for the 2021 budget, which sets August 10th as the date for public hearing on the 2021 budget and establishes the maximum limits of the 2021 budget.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to authorize publication of the notice of budget hearing for the 2021 budget, which sets August 10th as the date for public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes five zero. That will move us to 7.3.
Item 7.3, resolution number 20-7851, declaring the East Crawford Recreation Area to be considered a qualified facility under the City of Salina Municipal Facilities, naming guidelines with proceeds from the naming being dedicated to the refurbishment of Dean Evans Stadium.
Mr. Goddard.
Good afternoon, Mayor Hoppick, members of the commission. Yesterday, the Parks and Recreation Department seeks approval of Resolution 20-7851. This resolution will allow Baseball Enterprises the ability to sell the naming rights for the East Crawford Recreation Area to a local prominent family in return for a $650,000 investment to be used for the Dean Evans Stadium renovation project. Staff is of the opinion that this naming initiative is separate from the original request and needs to follow the naming process by letting the new proposed name go before the park board at the August meeting. Before proceeding, staff wants to ensure that the commission is comfortable renaming a park, with the funding from that naming process going to renovate a facility in that park. Baseball Enterprises has made it clear that funds from this renaming is essential for the successful renovations of Dean Evans Stadium. Staff is supportive of this measure. Kenny Hancock and Byron Tomlinson are present and can answer any questions the commission may have.
Any questions from the commission?
I don't know what's a question or concern. So the naming right is for just one stadium. Well, no, I'm sorry, it's for the entire area, even though the funds are for just that, just for one stadium in that entire complex?
Yes, sir.
I mean, when a number amount, a dollar amount was, let's just say, dreamed up for what would be appropriate for a naming right for something that large, was it for the entire complex or just for the one stadium?
Originally, when we came before you for Resolution 19-733, which was passed on August 26th, 2019, was declared all areas of the East Crawford Recreation Area eligible to be named. The original intent was, I believe, was for them to find multiple donors to do everything. However, as of March 25th, when the project was put on hold by a 5-0 vote by the commission, they came back on June 1st, and the commission voted 5-0 to prove a new approach, which was to do just Dean Evans Stadium. So that's where the, I believe, the new figure came from, simply for Dean Evans, because the focus is now from not doing the entire area to just one facility within the park.
We made that decision, and I'm asking more because I can't remember, were the naming rights for the entire area considered part of that decision? Or was it that discussion just to limit the scope of financing that we, you know, that we could entertain at this point?
There was discussion at that time. Baseball Enterprises asked to reserve their ability to rename East Crawford Recreation Area as part of that revised project. I don't know that there was ever a dollar amount discussed at that time. It was, they, they felt that it was important in their fundraising effort. It was they felt that it was important in their fundraising efforts, and they've since been able to report back to us, the 650,000 figure is what they were able to raise as a donation, and they probably need to speak to this more than I, but in direct connection to the renaming of East Crawford Recreation Area. So at the point that June 1st meeting that Mr. Cotton was referring to, you considered kind of an altered approach in terms of the COVID financial challenges that we had, and Baseball Enterprises solely paying for Dean Evans. But at that time, they did ask for the ability to seek donations to rename East Crawford Recreation as part of that Dean Evans effort.
Okay, because USD, and I don't know if probably going too far ahead with the next issue, but.
They definitely interrelate.
Right, well, a significant portion of that money is coming from another public entity. And I guess it just seems, I don't know how to phrase it, since I don't know who the donor is, I guess I can say this, hoping it don't offend anyone. I would think for the entire complex, I'd look for more money.
In part, our naming policy tries to break it into steps to avoid the awkwardness that you just described. And so that first step is to to name a declare a facility eligible for for naming.
And that's what I probably should have asked first. This action is just to say that this that name is available for renaming. It has nothing to do with who, how much, I mean, the amount is immaterial in our decision to decide if it's eligible.
Correct. Now, staff has done a couple of things. You've already taken action to identify it as eligible for renaming, but recognizing that the alteration in terms of the scope of the project and the fundraising effort is a change, that's why we've brought this resolution back to you. We're trying to make sure that you're aware of the the amount, its connection to not only the Dean Evans project, but the renaming is the basis of being able to secure that donation, and then that it is the East Crawford name rather than a single facility.
Would that action be separate, should, I would think, should be separate from whoever it's going to be named after, or for whatever donation? I mean, just the fact that we're saying, okay, yes, this could and should be renamed, or really that it could be renamed.
Right. Yeah, there are more steps in the process, but the reason we brought this back to you is so that we addressed this decision point early on. I don't want to set this up for a surprise, as Baseball Enterprises is proceeding on the next action item that we have on your agenda, on the basis that they can go forward with a construction bid, design and bid, to find out that you have some level of discomfort of this proposed naming and fundraising approach.
I have one more, but go ahead.
I was I was just trying to, you know, in my own mind, instead of being a naming initiative that encompasses all of the fields and projected, and, you know, an additional, you know, championship field, this just this links it to just having the the one field renovation. So that's that's the reason that it's coming back to us, correct? Because we're not talking about the the entire complex, which I tried to add, I tried to add all that up in terms of, you know, what what all of the East Crawford Recreation Area costs were going to be. But so that's that's, I guess, where I and you all know your fundraising far better than 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 I would, and also, I could never come up with $650,000. So that's awesome, but I do echo Commissioner Davis's, I don't know if I'd say concern, but at least observation that, I mean, this is like the biggest naming right that we have for this this project, and I don't I don't know if, you know, if that being gone right off the bat, if if that's a good thing or a bad thing, I honestly don't know. So but that's just kind of what I'm thinking aloud right now.
I certainly want to give Baseball Enterprises the opportunity to speak. They're the ones that have done the fundraising and initially proposed the approach to you, and then were able to secure a very significant contribution in return for that naming right. So they, I think, can speak to it more specifically than I can, about the importance of the East Crawford naming, as well as the desire not to change the Dean Evans.
One quick question. Yeah, this is so instead of being the East Crawford Recreational Area, it'll be the blank Family Recreational Area, for example. But we still have the ability to do naming rights on the other fields that are still out there. So we still have that, make sure everybody's aware of that. So we still have the ability to do additional fundraising through naming rights on those those.
I guess I'm a little bit confused as to why this is before us, because we've already determined that East Crawford Recreation Area is eligible for naming rights. We've done this step once, and even though the project is taking on a different form, that's still in place. We haven't said we're not going to do the rest of the project. And I just think, you know, if and the issue is, as I understand it, is we've all, I think, agreed not to rename the stadium away from Dean Evans Stadium, I think, for some very good reasons. And what's left for this stage of the project is the East Crawford Recreation Area, because we have no other facilities out there that would provide, I guess, a nexus with the project other than the facility as a whole. Now, I don't know if that compromises the ability to raise money for any of the subfacilities. In other words, they're going to say, well, you know, somebody got a naming right for this amount of money for the entire facility, for one field, you know, I ought to be able to get a naming right for one tenth as much, or whatever. I'm not sure it works that way. But personally, I really don't have an issue with this. I mean, it's something we've already done.
Agreed.
The structure's a little bit different because of the way the project is proceeded. You know, I'm perfectly fine with the way it sits.
Any questions for staff? Would would Baseball Enterprise like to say a few words?
The only thing that I would like to clarify is, in in kind of the overall history of the East Crawford Recreational Complex, when it was first established, there was no names for any of the stadiums up there. And the concept, when we first fundraised for Dean Evans, which is the first stadium that was named, was, and the Commission then, as we came to them, we told them we wanted to do a partnership with the city, and we wanted to name a premier diamond, Dean Evans Stadium. Now, at that time, James Matson Stadium was there, but was not named James Matson, and there were four other diamonds just to the south that were there. And they were just East Crawford One, East Crawford Two, East Crawford Three, East Crawford Four, which they still are today. And so the concept was, as Dean Evans would start a a tendency to honor Salinans for their philanthropy, not just for baseball, but for youth, and or with doing a very notable service to the community. So James Matson was a, as you recall, a participant in Legion Baseball and died tragically from cancer and was honored with that naming. Roger Wilbur, which is right next to Dean Evans, was on the original Salina Baseball Board, also died of cancer, very instrumental in in baseball in Salina, and was named. So we are trying to continue that overall philosophy. And when we first had our $8 million project, which got sidetracked with the virus, we were probably going to name the other two diamonds, or three diamonds, that were going to be turfed, and the Recreation Center, all with Salina families that had been not just instrumental in baseball, but instrumental in youth, and have a history. And we talked with you earlier when we approved your initial ones, that we would steer away from corporations, or, you know, try to stay away from products that the public might feel don't incorporate city naming. And so we've stuck with, as our pledge to you, a family, and we've secured a Salina family that would like to donate. And with that future plan, that's why I think naming this recreational complex does fit in with the plan. It's what we have to name right now, because Dean Evans Stadium renaming is not an option. We don't wish it to be an option. We want to start with renovation, and we hope in the future that we can continue our original project. And this naming of the recreational complex will actually be a motivation for us to help you in the future with fundraising, develop the whole whole complex, because we think you'll see the value of the turf, and we think you'll see extra revenue from being able to rent the diamond at Dean Evans, and we know it'll be in demand. So we we consider the naming of the complex kind of a a beginning, not an end to our project. And we hope that in the future, we'll continue with that, and all the stadiums will carry names of Salinans that have helped youth and baseball and softball. So that's my comment. Where we're going with that, I have secured a donor. One of the reasons why we didn't want to publicize the name, of course, is protection, in case there was any feeling that this shouldn't be the case. And if so, we'll respect your decision and move on, but it will hurt our fundraising considerably.
And to that point, near the next item that we have to consider, the agreement to proceed with the project is predicated on this donation, correct?
It's certainly, as you know, the amount, that's why we wanted to publicize the amount. And what we're planning on doing is putting in about $1.8 million in Dean Evans. So that's the portion, you know, that has a portion, a fairly large portion.
Just one question. If the coronavirus had not happened, and we were flush with cash, and the project was moving on.
Yes.
Would there have been enough donations from the private side to complete your $4 million half?
No question.
Okay.
Unequivocally for certain.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other comment from the public? Okay, if not, I'll bring it back to the Commission.
Mayor.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I'm Jacqueline Cairo again, Salina, Kansas. As as far as this renaming ideas, I am late in the game, I just didn't expect to comment on this, but I will say that if any part, and by the way, I love baseball, I watched Bad News Bears again last night, but I, if if any part of the public, the property discussed, the East Crawford, is owned by the public, or, you know, which it is, public needs to have a say in any renaming. I'm here to speak for the citizens of Salina. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And just to be clear, this is like where it's step one in the naming process, and there are opportunities for public input as we go along through the process, both it's going to be reviewed by the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and it'll be coming back to this this body as well.
Okay, bring it back to the Commission for action.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number twenty seventy eight fifty one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number two zero dash seven eight five one. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes five zero. With that, we will move seven to seven point five.
Item seven point five, resolution number two zero seven eight five five, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Salina Athletic Partners, including Salina Baseball Enterprises, Inc., Unified School District Number 305, and Kansas Wesleyan University, relating to Dean Evans Stadium.
Mr. Skregg.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This item definitely interrelates with the one that you just considered, and we tried to to put them together on this agenda so that to help with clarity. Some of the things I'm going to report are background information that I'm sure you're aware of, but for the general public's benefit. We were approached by Salina Baseball Enterprises proposing a public-private partnership, where they offered to raise $4 million and asked for a $4 million match from the city. At that time, that was pre-COVID, and we still had budget challenges. We had $37.8 million of unfunded budget budget requests, and we went through quite a planning exercise, and consensus was reached, and you provided direction to staff to pursue funding of our share, the city's share of that project, with a transient guest tax increase. And so staff then began meeting with representatives of Baseball Enterprises and worked on a project scope and budget and prioritization of items to to develop a budget. We had a draft agreement before you in December of last year, and got some feedback with you about how to from you about how to proceed. Then the financial impacts of the coronavirus started to take effect, and necessitated us revising the 2020 budget, and we postponed, we reviewed a lot of things in detail, postponed quite a few, and this project being one of them. We postponed further consideration until June 24th of this year. And in the intervening time, Salina Baseball Enterprises approached you and indicated they'd like to move forward with renovations to Dean Evans Stadium, funding those entirely with Salina Baseball Enterprise funding and donations, and not asking for a financial contribution on the part of the city. That project was dedicated only for Dean Evans and not for any other field renovations, and they indicated they estimated to be a cost of 1.8 million. And at that time, they requested the ability to retain the right to rename East Crawford Recreation Area as an element of their fundraising effort. And so based on the direction that you provided on that commission meeting date, you authorized that we should go forward and prepare a revised agreement. And so they also, some of the other things that Baseball Enterprises noted at that time were that they were hopeful that transient guest tax proceeds would return to normal at some point, and we could take up the remainder of the the public-private partnership when the timing was right. They requested that field scheduling priority that had already been accounted for in the prior agreement be incorporated as part of this approach to Dean Evans, and they underscored that they were not asking for a financial commitment from the city, and that was on your June 1st agenda. At that time, you unanimously approved a motion indicating concurrence with their proposed approach, and authorizing staff to coordinate with Salina Baseball Enterprises to bring you a revised agreement. And we continue to meet regularly to prepare that the agreement that's before you today, and a copy of that's been attached to the staff report. The agreement refers to the Salina Athletic Partners, which is comprised of Salina Baseball Enterprises, USD 305, and Kansas Wesleyan University, and it provides that they will design, contract for construction and installation, and fund the cost of the Dean Evans Stadium improvements. The scope is spelled out in Exhibit A to the agreement, and the city's participation is limited to drainage improvements, which we've already completed, and the base cost of replacing netting at the stadium, which is in need of repair at this time. In fact, we've kind of been biding our time while we put the put this project together. The project and the Baseball Enterprises wishes to do a patio project behind home plate, you may recall that, which will change the configuration of the netting, and they've agreed to pay the cost difference between the base cost of the netting and its current configuration, and that revised configuration to accommodate the patio seating. So the agreement goes on to provide that there will be an account maintained by Salina Baseball Enterprises, as well as an account established with the Greater Salina Community Foundation, that they'll confirm to us in writing the availability of the funds in the form of a cash-on-deposit bank lines of credit secured by pledges, in the combined amount of not less than 1.8 million. The target date for that is August 18th, and that's a precondition to them being able to enter into any construction contracts or proceed further with the project. The school district has been interlocutely involved all along, and they've agreed to contribute $500,000 to this project. And the agreement goes on to say that a project account dedicated to this project will be maintained, and that monthly accounting will be provided to the city. The Salina Athletic Partners retain the naming rights for the East Crawford Recreation Area, as we just discussed. And then it provides for oversight by the city manager, or the city manager's or the city manager's designee with the advice of a design and construction advisory group comprised of Baseball Enterprises, the school district, the city, Kansas Wesleyan University, and a licensed architect mutually agreed upon by the parties. It provides that we will meet and confer as needed. And the city has final discretion and authority as the ultimate owner of the facility. It also provides that Baseball Enterprises will serve as the contracting partner by way of a license agreement, subject to review and consent by the city. And it spells out in detail the elements of the project that they agree to facilitate. It provides that the city retains ownership and control of Dean Evans Stadium and access is granted to Baseball Enterprises by way of a license agreement. The city retains authority to control use and scheduling of the facility subject to the scheduling priority that's provided for in the agreement. And based on the level of donation, scheduling priority is given first to Baseball Enterprises, followed by USD 305 and then Kansas Wesleyan University. As we've previously discussed, it also provides for a maintenance and advisory board and it serves an advisory role to the city manager and the Park and Recreation Board regarding use, maintenance, scheduling, potential future improvements, fees, and concessions for the facility. And its membership is made up of representative of Baseball Enterprises, the school district, Kansas Wesleyan, city manager's office, city parks and recreation department, and the Park and Rec Advisory Board. And then that body recommends representative from baseball at large and softball at large as well. Funding the maintenance and replacements is something that's been an identified concern that we've talked about at length, not just for this project, but for many parks projects, recognizing we have a significant amount of deferred maintenance. So you previously had discussions about what's been referred to as an escrow fund or a sinking fund and setting that up. We did put an excerpt from prior minutes and conversation on that topic just as a refresher for you in the staff report. And the agreement contains several very specific provisions to address maintenance and replacement of the turf. With respect to that, it provides that there will be rules relating to proper use of the fields and that there will be multiple replacement turf panels for selective partial replacement of turf in high-wire areas. That's something that Baseball Enterprises has proposed from the outset, recognizing there are certain areas of the turf that will get more wear and tear. And so that'll extend the useful life of the field and the turf. And that's part of the budget. It also provides for user fees that are consistent with those charged by other communities for comparable facilities. And we talked about this at great length and agreed that fees will be charged by the game, on a basis by the game, by the hour for practices and use. And there'd be additional fees for use of lights at the facility. Additionally, then, they're not subject to waiver. So that, just to clarify, that the fee is expected of all participants. It does provide that there's a graduated fee schedule in recognition of the level of contribution of some of the athletic partners. And then it also identifies the suggested relevant factors that could be taken into consideration when setting those fees. And that does not limit it to just those considerations, but things that were identified were cost of operating and using the facility, cost of ongoing maintenance and repair, capital costs associated with construction and maintenance, as a few examples. So those provisions were intended to convey that the fee structure is intended to fund maintenance and future replacement costs. And as I mentioned, there was considerable discussion about the approach. And so the section 4.5.3 was something that we discussed at length. And it represents Salina Baseball Enterprises' proposed approach to the sinking fund and escrow fund that I had mentioned in response to conversations that have occurred before this body before. So what is proposed is establishing a dedicated fund to accumulate those funds, a city fund, for maintenance, repair, and replacing the turf surfaces at Dean Evans. And that it be initially funded by matching contributions of $50,000 from the city and the Salina Athletic Partners. And that there be an annual contribution of $50,000 by the city commencing in 2022. So it goes on to provide that if we have discretion, subject to non-appropriation, and if we should choose not to fund the $50,000 in 2021, then the Salina Athletic Partners wouldn't be expected to either. At least they could opt out of it. It goes on to provide that any user fees and other resources, as the city determines, may be used to fund that $50,000 contribution. And it's subject to annual appropriation. It's to be determined in the city's sole discretion. And the parties acknowledge that the fund is not intended to be the sole source of funding for replacement of the turf. And the replacement of the turf component in approximately 12 years will be dependent upon facility user fee increases, additional fundraising efforts, or other yet to be identified sources of funding. I would note that this approach, depending on whether the replacements in 10 or 12 years, would yield about $600,000 to $700,000 in that escrow fund without interest, which is in the ballpark, no pun intended, of what we think the replacement cost would be. As far as a fiscal note, there's no direct fiscal cost associated with this initial request. It's being funded by Baseball Enterprises. As I just mentioned, it does provide for an annual contribution from the city. And then it would be our facility to operate and maintain. We'd have the ability to set fees and adjust fees to try to address that. So the items, the actions that we've identified for your consideration, you could approve the resolution as it's been presented. You could approve it with amendments as you deem appropriate. You could postpone consideration of the resolution and provide additional direction on any information or amendments that you'd like. Or you could vote to deny the resolution and without further direction on your part, I think that would be interpreted as declining Salina Baseball Enterprises' offer with the intent of discontinuing further negotiations. I did note that Salina Baseball Enterprises and their donors have demonstrated a considerable amount of commitment and patience and tenacity as this has played out over time. They're very committed to this project and I commend them for it. And that you've expressed concern about funding ongoing maintenance and replacement of the turf, which deferred maintenance isn't a priority or something that's taken on higher priority with us. The proposed approach does include that we would accept additional financial responsibility for ongoing maintenance, but it really kind of turns into somewhat of a cost-benefit analysis of, you know, the value of the $1.8 million that Baseball Enterprises has raised and committed to the project on the front. And that is definitely significant. I don't have any sense that the city or city staff could raise those kind of funds or get that kind of support for this project. So the value of the donation being offered and the improvement being proposed is very substantial and wouldn't be possible without Salina Baseball Enterprises. And we have every reason to believe that the agreement represents the extent of what Baseball Enterprises is willing to commit. We've had continued numerous frank conversations. And they, it's very heartfelt that they've done what they can to raise funds. And they feel like they're coming to the table with an offer that they feel is very reasonable. So with that, if you agree with the approach, then the staff would recommend option number one. If that's not acceptable, I'm a little bit at a loss as to alternatives. And it really is a negotiation that I can't speak for Salina Baseball Enterprises. So with that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Okay, questions for staff?
Okay, I'll bite. Where is our initial $50,000 going to come from?
I anticipated it would come out of the park fee, the $500,000 park fees that we have available.
So it would come out of the $500,000 we've allocated to deal with deferred maintenance in the park fund
Right.
and earn the special sales tax fund.
Just two questions. One is more baseball related. Does the system of graduated fees apply just to Dean Evans? Or does that same graduated fee schedule apply to the entire complex?
I'll try to take that one first. The opportunity to set new fees comes out.
I think your mic went off. Mike?
Right, I thought I turned it on. I must have turned it off. I think the opportunity to reset fees comes from Salina Baseball Enterprises' donations they've raised so far and the creation of this advisory group. So I think we'll most likely look at all of our fees. And if we change those fees, then we would try to recognize that graduated fee schedule in return for the donations.
Okay. And can this agreement go all the way to, or can it be completed without 7.3, the naming rights?
We're trying to.
Gone through its natural life process?
Yes. In Baseball Enterprises' interest of confirming the donation, we need to run these together. So this would be, we'd enter into this agreement and part of, then we'd have to run the naming process as well. And then as they come back and confirm the availability of funds, it would be a function of the naming process being successful and that $650,000 being available.
And if the naming, I'm not suggesting this to happen, but if the naming process was not successful, what happens to this agreement?
Well, I think Baseball Enterprises would have the opportunity to say that they don't have the funds, the precedent condition is not met, and the agreement wouldn't go forward.
All right. So they would have no penalty, be no penalty on?
Not on Baseball Enterprises' part. The project could be unsuccessful.
I've got just a couple of questions and they might even be for Mr. Cotton. Do we have a sense of what user fees are typically generated each year from the field rental?
That is a good question. We've talked about that a number of times, but I don't know it off the top of my head. Chris, do you happen to know?
Maybe Mr. Shealy.
We don't generally break the fees out between the two complexes. But between Bill Burke and East Crawford, the user fees are around $130,000 a year.
Okay. And then per this agreement specifically, I'm assuming at the present time, staff is setting what those user fees are, Parks and Rec staff. And I'm assuming that at some level, we have an oversight that approves approves those fees, whether that looks like our comprehensive fee schedule or when exactly we approve that. Going forward, under the new agreement, who would, because I just wasn't sure, who is going to be setting the user fees under the new agreement? Is it going to continue to be Parks and Rec with consultation with Baseball Enterprises and USD 305 and Kansas Wesleyan? Or is this something that, you know, is at Parks and Rec's sole discretion?
We will consult with the advisory group for the project that's going to be involved. There'd be an ongoing board, that advisory group that meets for the whole complex. But ultimately, the decision for fees will still be left up to the city.
Okay, okay. That was my question in terms of what role the advisory board played in terms of the establishment of the user fees. And let's see, while I've got you.
Not to interrupt, but just to clarify that a little bit further, that is correct. And the agreement references the East Crawford Recreation Advisory Board. So it's more than just the donors. It's that larger group. And it goes on to say that the parties agree to express intent and desire when making its recommendations in the city commission when establishing fees. So it acknowledges the city commission's role.
That's what I thought, but I wanted to make sure. And then I also wanted to make sure another component of that is once the revenues are received, who ultimately has control over those revenues and where they should be spent? Obviously, there's going to need to be a lot of consultation in terms of what Baseball Enterprises or improvements that need to be made, or USD 305, or Kansas Wesleyan. But at the end of the day, if we were to choose to direct some of those proceeds toward our part of the ongoing $50,000 a year sinking fund contribution, would we have that discretion? Or is that something that the advisory board directs the receipts, how those funds are spent?
No, we would have that discretion. In fact, it's intended to be built that way. That if we can realize some fee increment, that that could be applied to the $50,000. And so, you know, there's a provision that there will be a dedicated turf maintenance and replacement fund that the city will establish. There is the contemplation that fees can be applied to the city's $50,000. There's also consideration that it's subject to non-appropriation on the part of the city, which ultimately that we kind of penalize ourselves if we non-appropriate early on. It just stacks up that deferred maintenance. But it leaves considerable discretion with the city.
Thank you. And then I know that we've, we invested in a drainage project. And I looked through my old Baseball Enterprises materials and I didn't see it. Do you know a ballpark of how much we invested in the drainage project this year? Was it around $75,000?
No, I think it was around $57,000.
I think the initial estimate may have been $75,000.
I just couldn't remember. And then what are we looking at in terms of a ballpark cost, again, no pun intended, but for netting replacement? What were we budgeting for the netting replacement?
If memory serves, the original, to replace the existing net was around $4,000, I think. And then there was another $250,000 to maybe $3,000 for the new net. So we would be on the hook for the original investment.
If it helps at all, we wouldn't deny that both of those were needed projects independent of the Dean Evans proposal.
Thank you.
So if something happens with the initial $50,000 contribution from each party and whatever, for whatever reason, that does not happen, is the city still then responsible for the $50,000 annual contribution in the following years?
I looked at the author of that language. I believe so. I mean, it starts with the presumption that each of us will put in the $50,000.
Right.
It provides for an annual contribution. And then it just follows up that if the city fails to appropriate the funds for that initial $50,000, Salina Athletic Partners shall be relieved of their obligation of the $50,000. I think the presumption is the annual contribution would continue. However, it's still subject to annual appropriation on part of the city.
Annual appropriations, okay.
Yes, Commissioner, that was the thought, as you might imagine. The two that are timed virtually at the same time were what the arrangement anticipated, that understandably that Baseball Enterprises wanted to be assured that the city would be making that initial contribution simultaneous with the expectation that they would make the initial contribution. If the city didn't, they are relieved of that responsibility. But it did anticipate that the agreement would otherwise go forward.
I do have, I guess, a suggestion to throw out with respect to 4.5.3, subitem C. I would like for the reading of that to change to say an annual contribution of not to exceed $25,000 by the city, payable from transient guest tax proceeds, to match one-for-one with fee revenues from use of the facilities and private contributions commencing on or before December 31, 2022, and each year thereafter. That simply makes a formal tie between the fee revenues and the funds that are committed and makes it clear that that is a part of the city contribution along with whatever might come from private entities, private individuals to contribute to replacement of the turf when it expires.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Franz, could you tell me where that section was again?
It's section 4.5.3 on page nine.
Thank you.
And subsection C.
Great, thank you.
Simply spells out a little more detail on the $50,000 contribution annually that we will make. And I'm simply expanding that to include, we can do that, but match the fee revenues.
Repeat that again, how you had that broken down, if you would, Commissioner Franz.
Pardon?
Repeat how you had that broken down.
I'm saying that it's an annual contribution of not to exceed $25,000 by the city commission, payable from transient guest tax, to be matched one-for-one or to match one-for-one with fee revenues from use of the facilities and private contributions commencing on or before December 31, 2022. The idea is to preserve the sales tax proceeds so we can continue to allocate the full $500,000 to our parks maintenance catch-up and to make it clear that the $50,000 includes the fee revenues and any private contributions that might come in for that.
I like that idea. Would that mean that we would need to take a look at how we have our transient guest tax structured? Since I think that we allocate it proportionally between Visit Salina and then the two other marketing funds, basically?
Those are by percentage, so.
Yeah, I said proportion.
Not a fixed dollar amount. So without, unless we're able to amend our agreement with. So without, unless we're able to amend our agreement with CVB, we would need to take that out of our share of the transient guest tax that goes to the Tony's Pizza Event Center. Just as a clarification, so your expectation would be the total of the fees and private donations on an annual basis then determine how much to be matched by transient guest tax?
Right. The idea is that we would contribute up to 25,000, and if the fees came in at 25,000, there'd be 50,000 there. If the fees come in at 10,000, then there'd be 20,000 there.
Only problem with that is that the field's going to need to be replaced, whether those fees have been substantial or not.
Which is why, I said earlier, if the payments are less on the front end, it's our maintenance that we're deferring. And, and I don't want to put words in Baseball Enterprises' mouth, but, you know, they've been with us for how many years now? Third?
Two and a half.
Been with us for decades in terms of raising funds. So there's a conversation about, you know, when we get 10, 12 years out, then maybe there's another fundraising drive. But my point, I guess, is if we don't make the annual contributions, we may find ourselves with a maintenance cost.
I do like the way that you have the funds set, just that, well, the other question is, is there enough of those fees that's not already earmarked for something else to take 25,000?
Well, the proposal is that they're going to increase fees for use of those facilities with an eye to recovering some of this cost. Now, I don't expect it to recover all of it, but I do expect us to keep track of and manage those fees. And I just, I, I am concerned that we're making the commitment for the full $50,000 every year without some formal tie to other fee income that should be included as a part of that, or to private donations if they happen to transpire. And I'm not, I'm not going to, I don't know what to expect there. But the idea is we can get 10 years or 12 years, and at that level, the bulk of the money should be there. And at that point, we can decide how to proceed with whatever balance is not.
I guess the question I was asking of the $130,000 that's estimated that comes in, is that, you know, is that still a loss for us for operating those fields, but it eases the pain? Or you should reasonably expect that there's profit at the end of the year?
Yeah, I don't know that it breaks even or it's profitable, but recognizing that, the thinking was that if there's new increment to be generated, we capture that and direct it to this.
So that would get earmarked to come off the top?
I guess this would be a question for either Mr. Cotton or Baseball Enterprises. Will you have a mechanism in place that when fees get increased, that you would know what those dollars are that would go into, to basically a fund that could then be transferred at the end of the year?
Well, as we run it now, all of the, all the fees for the use of all of our athletic complexes goes to the general fund. So we can set that mechanism up any way that we needed to, to track that. But we don't, it doesn't dollar-for-dollar come back to operate those facilities. We operate the facilities as part of the park system, and then, and part of that is the economic impact we have when people come to town. So we don't recover all of our expenses running the complexes. $130,000 is a good sum of money, but it, it doesn't recover the cost of running either one of those facilities.
But in answer to your question, probably the easiest way would be to identify the baseline that we have on the current fee structure, and then see what we get in the way of, because it's not just a function of that rental fee, it may be a function of increased rentals as well. So we could establish a baseline, and as long as we exceed that baseline by 25,000.
I mean, that's the only way you're going to be able to do it, based on Commissioner France.
Either that, or it's an increment of every single rental, which is going to be a lot harder to account for.
If we increase fees too much, just to be clear, if we increase fees too much, we'll, we'll lose that business. I mean, we won't from some of the local groups, but people coming from outside to rent our facilities, so we need to be cognizant of that as well.
Well, it's my understanding, this may not be correct, but it's my understanding that the bulk of the use on Dean Evans, which is the facility we're talking about, I think, upgrading at this point, is college ball, Wesleyan, high school ball, Legion ball. In other words, they are, and because of the nature of the contributions, those individuals have scheduling priorities, and that they pay fees for using the facility. And I thought the concept was that those fees for those individuals would be increased to some degree to cover the maintenance and replacement of the turf at the time that needs to happen.
Yeah, still recognizing the graduated rate schedule.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. And I guess just maybe a follow-up question to Commissioner France's question is, I get the correlation between USD 305, and they're having a seat at the table, and preferential scheduling, et cetera, et cetera. And I understand Baseball Enterprises is there to represent the Legion and the baseball programs there, I get that. So where does Kansas Wesleyan come in? Because they're in that priority group, and so are they providing financial commitment that, because, I guess I'm revealing something about myself, but I'm a very money-oriented person, and I didn't want to interrupt you when you were talking about naming something for a family, but if Cirillas came in here and they said, "I'll give you a million dollars for it," I'd be sold, okay? So that, that's where I'm at. And it's kind of like, so what is Wesleyan, Kansas Wesleyan doing to buy their seat at the table?
I can answer it, but I've invited Steve to give you that answer, since I would prefer Wesleyan answer.
Steve Wilson, I'm the director of athletics at Kansas Wesleyan. We do have $125,000 marked for the baseball project, and all-in on baseball and softball, 250,000, so in gender equity, 125 to baseball.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate, appreciate knowing that, and thank you for the contribution.
Thank you.
I'm anticipating another question. Sacred Heart is verbally committed to donating to the project. The amount hasn't been set yet, but they have verbally committed. The last time I was here, we weren't sure, and so I did want to give you that knowledge also.
I have a couple of questions. When we're looking at the turf, I know we've talked about, you know, there's high usage areas, pitcher's mounds, batting boxes. In the original cost, are there, there's additional turf that's being purchased to help replace those over that first 10- to 12-year period? Is that correct?
Construction guy, can you answer that?
Kenny Hancock, 1831 Hillcrest Lane. Yes, that's correct. We will be requesting for first base, second base, and third base, three replacement panels that, in addition to the first laying of the turf. But at the batter's box, the catcher's area, and pitcher's mound, we'll be getting six replacement panels. Depending on how, how well they wear, depending on use, how well we maintain them, the six, it's estimated from the turf manufacturers that the six replacement panels will get us through to the entire turf replacement, and that's what our goal is, so that we don't have to buy any others. There are fairly small additional costs if we would have to, but I'm trying to get us so that the point is, we'll pay for everything upfront, we'll have them there, stored somewhere, and we can just replace them. They will be Velcroed in. They're not quite as easy as it sounds to undo them and put them in, but it's fairly straightforward to do it.
One other question. We're talking about the full replacement cost at the end of that 10- to 12-years being significantly less. Could you address that?
Yeah, we originally had in our estimates that a replacement cost would be about 60% of the initial cost of the turf. And the initial cost right now that are, that we have budgeted for Dean Evans is about 975,000, let's call it 1 million. Recent conversations, and actually Byron and I met today with two potential turf suppliers, the same ones that, we haven't changed the turf suppliers that we've approved, we just have ongoing conversations with them for the last couple of years. 50% is actually the number that they say that it's been coming in at. So it headed downwards in the, in the right direction for us. So we're anticipating a half a million dollars to replace it. Of course, let's escalate the price 10 years, Hanson, it might be 600,000, but that actually accounts for some inflation some 10 years down the road as well.
Thank you.
Plus some 10 years, who knows?
Yeah, who knows? That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, I guess my comments are, you know, we're fortunate, and again, maybe this is a, a problem Salina has, is every time we do a large project, we have private donors that are significantly stepping forward. And we have a $1.8 million project here that there's zero dollars being asked to the city. And I think we're, we kind of lose sight of that, and into 10 years, I think as a city, we should have some cost, you know, because right now, we'll have basically no skin in the game. So I have mixed emotions over Commissioner France's request.
I agree. I don't, I agree with your last comments, Mayor, that I think that 50,000 is not too big a ask of the city, and to make a point of, of saying that we're, this is a partnership. It's been a partnership all along, and I think the baseball entities have done remarkable things about pulling the whole community together to be, to back this. So that 50,000 in part C doesn't bother me.
Well, I don't want to speak for Commissioner France, but I don't think his intention was to not be on hook-up, but just to direct where the money's going to come from for our budgeting purposes.
That's correct. I'm not disputing that we need to contribute something. I just want something down to show how the allocation is going to occur when we do contribute.
Based on your 50,000, the city isn't. Well, I guess unless we're taking transient guest tax, but we're taking that away from the T-PAC then. So, and then the other 25,000 is private funds slash fees.
Or fees.
Still no contribution from us.
But the initial presentation said there would be fees charged to help with this.
And I agree.
Okay.
But I don't know to what level that is. I guess that's, you know, so.
Well, something I keep coming back to, too, though, in, in defense of Commissioner France's suggestion, is I'm just not really excited about taking it away from that $500,000 a year that we have allocated out of the sales tax to try to address some of the other $6 million worth of deferred maintenance throughout our park system. So I guess that's why, you know, I mean, if that makes sense.
You know, given that, you know, the, the guest tax is allocated to T-PAC, and we also have other funds allocated to T-PAC that may end up coming out of the sales tax, I'm not going to stand on whether it comes from transient guest or sales tax. You know, I just, I just want it, it clear that, that, you know, we'll, we'll kick in one-for-one up to whatever it is, and then as we get down the road, we see how that's working, maybe we can change that. I just think there ought to be some mechanism for tying fees and private contributions and city contributions together on some sort of match. I just don't like the idea of saying we're going to give 50,000 every year, no matter what.
And not, not knowing what's coming from the fee structure.
Yeah, and then the fees disappear into operations, you know? And that's not the intent as we set out on this.
Any ideas, Mr. Scrag?
I'm sorry, let me turn my microphone on. If, if you're looking for language, one of the things that I've been drafting here is reversing the reference to the matching funds, to put it at the end of the thought. So what I have is an annual contribution of $50,000 by the city commencing on or before December 31, 22, and each year thereafter, to be funded with user fees and private donations and city funds, an amount matching user fees and donations not exceeding $25,000 per Meaning the match is not exceeding $25,000 a year.
Right. I think that says the same thing, in essence.
Guess I'd have to look to Mr. Cotton to see if that seems doable. Or Baseball Enterprises, I guess, I'm not sure. You're the funny guy, he's the construction guy, remember?
I think we could, I think we should be able to make it work, yes, sir.
Okay. If I may, I did some talking for Baseball Enterprises, and I want to give them the opportunity to clarify anything I might have said that I may have got wrong. I spoke on your behalf a little bit, I want to make sure I didn't get anything wrong.
Everything he said was the way we understood it. And as far as our initial donation of that 50,000, we could do that at any point, we're prepared to do that. And we have secured the funds for Dean Evans, so.
Mayor, if I may, while everyone's thinking, I do have one, I think, non-substantive point of just clarification. With your action just prior to this matter on the naming rights, you may have noticed that in section 2.1.3 that addresses naming rights, it refers to your prior action, the previous resolution, number 197733, the original.
I don't think we can hear you. Can you move up the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
The current language of the agreement in 2.1.3 refers to the resolution you enacted when you were addressing the naming rights for the, under the original plan. If we may, I anticipated that if you approved the resolution in your action, just immediately preceding this one, we would substitute today's date and the new resolution number as the basis for going forward on naming rights. So that's just a language change that follows the action you just took. If that makes sense?
So it, it would read, on July 27, 2020, the City Commission adopted resolution number 207851. In completion of the first step under the naming guidelines identified by?
55.
By identifying ECR. It's on page three of the agreement, section 2.1.3.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I see it. I think the number was 7855?
51.
51.
It was 51?
207851 is what I saw on the top.
I don't know what I'm looking at.
Do we have any public comment on this issue?
And I don't expect this, my comment to make any difference, but I feel like I just need to register an objection to establishing plastic turf at the site or anywhere else, you know, considering what's happening with our climate and, you know, outside of any economic concerns, because I, I haven't put numbers on it, but from an environmental standpoint, I just want to register that objection to the plastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Are you accepting a motion?
Yep, let's, let's take a shot at it, how's that?
I would, see if I can find the verbiage. I would move that we approve resolution number 207855 with an amendment to change the 4.5.3 subsection C in the way suggested by City Manager Scrag. I'm not going to try to repeat it all. Yeah.
Second.
Do you want to read your corrected, or your amendment, so we know exactly how that's verb?
Sure. Section 4.5.3 subsection C would read, "An annual contribution of $50,000 by the city commencing on or before December 31." commencing on or before December 31, 2022, and each year thereafter, to be funded with user fees and private donations and city funds in an amount matching user fees and private donations and not exceeding $25,000 per year." And then the other one, give me a second to get to that page. Section 2.1.3 would insert, in place of the reference to August 26th, a sentence that says, "On July 27, 2020, the City Commission adopted Resolution Number 20-7851, in completion of the first step under the naming guidelines, by identifying ECRAs in its entirety as a qualified facility for naming rights under the naming guidelines."
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 20-7855 with amendments, and I'm not going to try to repeat those, like we just heard those. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. Thank you, guys, Baseball Enterprises, for your work. Okay, that will lead us to 7.4.
Item 7.4, Resolution Number 20-7856, authorizing the mayor to execute a lease agreement with Saline County, Kansas, for the Saline County Expo Center.
Okay, Mr. Scrugg.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. If you'd asked me to guess, I never would have guessed these two agreements would be on the same agenda. I wouldn't have guessed what date either one of these would have hit our agenda. Again, I'm going to give you a little bit of background for the benefit of the public and the listeners at home, things that I'm sure you already know, but the ownership of Oakdale and Kenwood Park has been confusing or a little counterintuitive for not even decades, centuries, I guess you could say. Dating back to 1881, Oakdale Park and Kenwood Park were donated to the city and the county and held in trust, and ironically, Oakdale Park was held in trust by the county, and Kenwood Park was held by the city, and our uses kind of countered how those properties were held. So since 1922, the city occupied and maintained and physically improved Oakdale Park, and over a number of years, the city and the county have had discussions with regard to long-term permanent ownership and leasing of both of those parks. In March of 2011, the city and county entered into a real estate transfer agreement that transferred the ownership of Oakdale Park to the city in return for the city's commitment to future construction of public water and sanitary sewer improvements to a property that the county purchased in southeast Salina as a potential new site for an expo center located in the south and east of the intersection of Schilling Road and Ohio Street, not necessarily right in that corner, but just a little bit south of that corner. So the city's obligation in that agreement was to either, at the request of Saline County and in conjunction with development of that site that they purchased, to install the public improvements, or we could do it at the city's discretion. Our normal course of development caused us to install water and sewer main extensions in that location, so our requirements have been satisfied by our own initiation. As part of that real estate transfer agreement, there are other provisions related to Kenwood Park, specifically that Kenwood Park would no longer be subject to a provision that we previously had about the possibility of a development of a hotel, a convention hotel attached to the Tony's Pizza Event Center, which could then shorten the term of that lease, which was understandably a concern to the county. It also indicated that the county could extend their lease from 2019 for four one-year additional terms on the basis of conducting a county fair in the upcoming year. So that would have extended, could have extended the lease to 2023. The county indicated they didn't want to let that clock run out, they wanted to have conversations about renewing the lease well in advance of 2023, which is what precipitated the conversations that we've been having for quite some time now. So the county indicated a desire to extend that lease rather than relocate, and there's been a lot of discussion on the part of joint meetings and collaboration with city staff, involvement of consultants to develop possible master plans for the property. As you may recall, we, the county, asked us, you know, what our expectations were in terms of their improvement of the facility, and we brought in HDR, and they prepared to plan, and then the county prepared a plan, and we've looked at both of those, and then we kind of focused on a more cost-effective, value-engineered approach to maintenance and improvements. And one thing of note is, the county did not pay lease payments previously, and they're not asked to pay lease payments as part of this agreement either. Instead, the agreement specifically calls out that the, and this is a quote, "The city's willingness to enter into a lease term of 30 years at the request of the county was substantially induced by the county's commitment to complete the maintenance and improvement items and to be solely responsible for maintaining and repairing the expo center facilities in accordance with the standards and covenants set forth in this lease agreement throughout the entire lease term." So they have full responsibility for operation and maintenance of the facility as the tenant. The lease agreement that is before you today is the final product of joint meetings of the city and county commissions, as well as ongoing communications that we've had to refine the agreement. As highlights of that agreement, the term would be January 1 of 2021 to December 31 of 2050, so a 30-year term. Saline County's elected to discontinue leasing and maintaining the rodeo grounds in support of the county fair commencing in 2021. The county may remove personal property from the arena area, so not necessarily buildings and structures, but personal property. The city, as part of our river renewal project, has plans for the riverbank, and so as part of this agreement, we're committing to maintain back-of-curb parking along Kenwood Park Drive, kind of on the south side of the expo center location. They, during the fair, they use that extensively for horse trail or parking and those type of things. Exhibit C of the agreement is a very detailed itemized list of maintenance and improvement items that the county commits to pay for, diligently pursue and complete by December 31 to 2025. The agreement provides for an inspection and approval process regarding those improvements, so that the city inspects them and signs off on them. Failure to complete those items would be an event of default and would be grounds for termination of the lease agreement. The agreement also provides for a dispute resolution process in the form of a public meeting of the mayor, the vice mayor, and the city manager, the board of commissioners' chair, the board of commissioners' vice chair, and the county administrator. Admittedly, that's six people, it's going to take some consensus to resolve an issue. The agreement goes on to provide that the county may make additional exterior improvements, add buildings or demolish buildings at their expense, and subject to review and approval by the city, with one notation there. Ag Hall is identified as a significant resource, and so it's subject to some additional review and approval process in terms of city approval, and that's accounted for in the agreement. The lease agreement specifies that the county's maintenance and repair obligations include just keeping it neat, clean, sanitary, conforming with statutes and ordinances, maintaining the interiors of the buildings in safe and functional conditions, and maintaining the exteriors in at least as good order as constructed or completed by the county in accordance with the maintenance and improvement items, accounting for normal aging and fading of exterior surfaces. So the expectation is, we've communicated by way of Exhibit C, repairs and improvements to be made, and then there to maintain that level over the life of the lease. It does provide for city and county annual joint inspection of the facilities, it does provide that the city can initiate additional inspections, and then if there is a disagreement or if there's a concern, there is a notice and cure process where we would provide notice of a concern of noncompliance with the agreement, there'd be a cure period, and if a disagreement remains unresolved, then it may be resolved by an independent third party of the city's choosing. And then lastly, the expiration or termination of the lease, at the expiration or termination of the lease, the county may remove buildings within six months of the expiration or termination of that agreement. If you'd like, I can answer any questions you might have about the specifics of Exhibit C or the agreement. There's no direct fiscal cost to the city associated with this item, and it's all the financial responsibility of the county to make the agreed-upon improvements. As far as actions for your consideration today, you could approve the resolution in the agreement as it's been presented, you could approve it with amendments as you deem appropriate, you could postpone consideration of the resolution in the agreement to a specified date and time and provide additional direction regarding information or amendments that you'd like for further consideration. You could vote to deny the resolution, which would have the effect of discontinuing negotiations with Saline County. In light of all the conversations that have gone on to get to this point, staff recommends option number one, approving it as prepared.
Okay, questions for staff?
I think we've asked those over the last six years.
It's not to say there aren't questions to be had.
Yeah, okay. Any comments from the public? Or any comments from, I guess, should ask for other commissioners?
We hashed this out pretty well.
Over the last year or two, so. Any comments from the public? Okay, if not, I will bring it back to the commission.
Mayor, I move we approve Resolution Number 207856.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 20-7856. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0, and I would like to thank the county commission also for working on this. We were a ways apart, and we kept working towards a goal, and we managed to get there. So I'm excited to see the renovations and the way that that project moves forward, so. Okay. With that, we will move to development business.
Item 8.1, application Z20-2, requesting a change in zoning district classification from R2 to I2 on a vacant lot facing Reynolds Street, addressed as 535 Reynolds Street. A, or 8.1A, first reading ordinance number 20-11025. Item 8.2, application number Z20-3, requesting a change in zoning district classification from R to U, district for eight lots located on north side of Elucid Avenue, east of North Ninth Street. Item 8.2A, first reading ordinance number 20-11026. Item 8.3, consider recommendations from the Salina City Planning Commission to amend the future land use map designated of the former Lowell Elementary School site to urban residential, and to rezone the school site from R1 to PDD, which is R2. Item 8.3A, first reading ordinance number 20-11027. Item 8.3B, first reading ordinance number 20-11030.
Okay, these three items.
We could do those all at once.
Yeah, these three items are going to be handled separately, obviously. We will address item 8.1, which is ordinance 20-11025, application filed by Joe Hill Trust. Mr. Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. You have on your development business agenda tonight three recommendations that came forward from the planning commission's July 7 meeting that was held at the Tony's Pizza Event Center. And the first is an application filed by Mr. Joe Hill, and he is requesting rezoning of a vacant lot that was rezoned to R2 in 2019, and he's requesting that it revert back to its previous zoning, which is I2. Mr. Hill purchased this property back in 2014, it was formerly the site of a mobile home park, and that mobile home park was cleaned off the site before Mr. Hill purchased it. And Mr. Hill and his family own Bob's Pawn Shop, which is located in this location right here, and because of his aging parents and association with the business, he desired to create what I would call a live-work arrangement, just not within the same building. And so he filed an application in 2019 to change the zoning designation of six lots along the west side of Reynolds here, and he did so at my urging, because I believed, based on his preliminary plans, that he might need 150 feet of frontage along Reynolds to accommodate his plans. And the planning commission recommended approval of that change. He concurred with that recommendation, and on March 11, 2019, approved an ordinance that rezoned six lots here along the west side of Reynolds. A building permit for a new single-family attached dwellings were issued in 2019. With our nice 2020 aerial photos, we can now see the building as it is there, and you can see that I was wrong, and that this south 25 feet was not needed to make his house fit on the lot. Mr. Hill is having some complications with the county appraiser's office about the status of this lot and this building that's located on a portion of it, so he has filed this application to essentially, he'd like to undo the change that was made in 2019 as to this lot. And so this request is to have this particular lot right here revert back to I2, which is what, this is all zoned I2 here, and so he just wants to move the line 25 feet to the north as far as the I2 goes. Planning commission conducted a public hearing on this request at their July 7 meeting. There were no members of the public who appeared and spoke at the hearing, and the planning commission unanimously recommended that the property be changed from R2 back to its original I2. And the findings that they cited are located on page seven of your report. So this comes to you with a recommendation to approve the change to I2, and at this evening's meeting, you can concur with their findings and recommendation and approve the ordinance number 20-11025 on first reading this evening. This would require three affirmative votes. If you disagree with the recommendation of the planning commission to rezone this lot, you could return it back to the planning commission with your reasons for disagreeing. You could postpone consideration of this request to a future meeting date to allow the applicant or staff to provide you with additional information, or you could overturn the recommendation of the planning commission and vote to deny the attached ordinance 20-11025. So with that, I'd be open to any questions that the commission might have.
Just one, does Mr. Hill own clear down to the, owns that building to the south also, correct?
He built that building, he owns right to this line. And so it's a strange plat, where the lots that are platted are only 25 feet wide, so there's a whole bunch of lots all the way down to here, but he built this building here, and this is Bob's Pawn Shop, and then he built this so he could live side by side with his parents.
And that building to the south is I2?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
I think Destin, you had that boundary there that you had put up there, so. This is the part that is R2.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, any comments from the public? Is anybody from the, I don't see anybody here from the Hill family to comment?
I do not believe Mr. Hill is present.
Okay, with that, I will bring it back to the commission.
Mayor, I have moved that we concur with the findings and recommendation of the planning commission, approving on the attached ordinance number 211025, rezoning the lot 12 to I2. That be approved on first reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to concur with the findings and recommendation of the planning commission, the attached ordinance being number 20-11025, rezoning lot 12 to I2. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. Okay, Mr. Andrew, we've already read these, so I guess we'll move into 8.2, application Z20-3 filed by St. Francis Ministries.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is a rezoning request that was also filed and heard by the planning commission at their July 7 public hearing. I believe you're familiar with the former St. John's Military School campus, it's essentially bounded by North Ninth on the west, Euclid Avenue, sometimes referred to as College Court on the north, North Fifth Street on the east, and Otis Avenue on the south. The campus itself, the main campus, contains eight major buildings and several residential cottages, and covers 18 acres. and several residential cottages and covers 18 acres total. In February 2019, St. John's Military School announced it was closing at the end of the school year, and it closed its doors on May 11, 2019. Prior to that, back in the early 2000s, the St. John's Military School had purchased a number of homes and lots on the north side of Euclid, and they had cleared the homes from those lots. And in 2006, they came forward with a plan, a long-term campus plan, and they proposed relocating their football field, which was at the northwest corner of their campus. And they proposed relocating across the street to a recently cleared area on the north side of Euclid. And they did that in order to accommodate a new dormitory facility in the northwest corner of their campus. The Planning Commission approved a conditional use permit for those athletic fields in 2006. Their approval was for a period of two years. And then they went back and revisited it two years later just to see how it was working out, if any changes or modifications needed to be made. They determined that it was functioning fine and not creating any problems for neighbors. So the athletic field was approved as a permanent facility. Obviously, it's no longer being used for football. In September 2019, St. Francis Ministries announced a merger with St. John's Military School to form St. John's Ministries and School. And their plan was to make use of the campus as is to further their mission, which is to provide family care and support for youth. And so their, we don't have a great deal of specifics at this time, but they've run into some conflicts, which St. John's Military School also had with the fact that all of these lots on the north side of Euclid are zoned single-family residential. And so use of those for parking of equipment or parking of vehicles or fleet vehicles, the single-family zoning doesn't allow for that. So they have, they submitted an application to rezone eight lots on the north side of Euclid Avenue, including a corner lot at the northwest corner of Euclid and North Fifth Street from single-family residential to U, the same zoning as their campus. And in their application, they state that they will be consolidating portions of their Salina operations onto the campus of St. John's. And they'll be working to establish a new Center of Excellence for Social Services on the campus. And so the reclassification of select areas from residential to university is being done to enable them to move forward with their delivery of social services. So on Page 3 of your report, we provided a little bit of background as to the origins of the St. John's Military School zoning. And the military school itself was not a post-secondary institution like Kansas Wesleyan. But with the classrooms, the dormitories, the gymnasium, athletic fields, it had many of the same characteristics as a college campus. And the Planning Commission and City Commission determined that university zoning was the most appropriate zoning for the campus. And it's been zoned that way since 1977. St. Francis Ministries has indicated that they plan to use the campus facilities in a similar way to St. John's Military, the way that that operated. And at the public hearing, their Chief of Staff reported that they hope to house some students from K-State, Polytechnic, and Kansas Wesleyan in their dormitories, as well as offer campus instruction. Staff would want to point out that their plans for the campus are not fully fleshed out at this time. So we can't guarantee that a few years down the road that there may be uses or reuses of the campus proposed that might not fit with the university district. But based on the assumption that they plan to use the campus the same way, they have requested university zoning across the street to give them more flexibility for using those lots on the north side of the street for support facilities and services. So your role in this case is to determine whether those tracts of land are more suitable for residential use or uses that support St. Francis Ministries campus. And so the entire purpose of having a separate university district is to give operations that have university-oriented functions more flexibility than they would have if located in a residential district. So one approach might be to have colleges and universities zoned residential, but then try to address everything through a conditional use permit. But the university district is designed to recognize the mixed uses that are involved in a campus and to provide as much zoning flexibility as possible. So that's what the applicants are pursuing. Of the original 15 homes on the north side of the street, only six of those are still used for residential purposes. And St. Francis believes that the single-family zoning inhibits their plans to reuse the property. Obviously, the property is adjacent to existing university zoning. And I think Dustin, we had a map that showed the future land use plan and the comprehensive plan. And the, we may not have that in this packet, but it is in your packet. And the future land use plan shows this as future public, semi-public use. So the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing. The Chief of Staff of the school spoke at the hearing. There was no members of the public who appeared and spoke. And at the conclusion of the hearing, the Planning Commission voted to recommend that the zoning designation for those tracts on the north side of Euclid be changed from residential to university. And so your alternatives this evening would be to concur with the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission and approve Ordinance 20-11026, rezoning the three tracts to university on first reading. If you disagree with that recommendation, you could return this item back to the Planning Commission. That would take three votes. You could postpone consideration of this to a future meeting date to allow the applicant or staff to provide additional information. Or you could overturn the recommendation the Planning Commission made and deny the application. So if you approve that on first reading this evening, second reading would be scheduled for your next meeting on August 3. So with that, I'd be open to any questions you have about the application.
Just got one question. Are those six, looks like six properties, are those currently owned by, I'll call it St. Francis slash St. John's, or are those still inhabited?
Actually, the title to all the property is still in the name of St. John's Military School. They indicated that of the six homes that are still on the block, one of the homes of the six is owned by St. John's Military School. The other are owned individually. Dustin, I think you had a map that showed how the ownership was broken out on that with the red line plat. So if we could rotate that, maybe that would-
So when it just, when that says person house, that's owned by an individual?
Yes, I'm sorry, it's not more detailed, but that's the map that they gave me. And they didn't know all the particulars of the individuals, but they don't, these are owned by separate individuals. The school owns this, the school owns, this is incorrect. They actually own five through 10. They own this house, and then there's a house here, and then this lot is vacant.
Does the allowed use of parking require any kind of surfacing for the parking of the vehicles?
It does. But we received complaints about the parking of vehicles here. And so they applied for a permit to improve the parking lot. And we denied the permit to improve the parking lot because the zoning, the R zoning that was in place didn't allow a parking lot to serve the campus. So that was one of their reasons for applying to change the zoning. So they could construct a proper parking lot here for buses and fleet vehicles. What is there today would not meet our standards for a parking lot.
So if that was done adjacent to an occupied house, you then have buffers that are-
If they were to construct, get what we would call a zoning certificate to construct a parking lot there, they would have to provide screening along the lot line and as well as a buffer. So we would work with them to install the proper access, proper surfacing, and then the appropriate buffers for the parking lot. But if they're, I think we need to get over to the corner, Dustin. So this is the property in question where they would like to establish a lot. And if they do so, they would have to have a buffer and some sort of screening between the lot and this residence there. But we've denied their application for a zoning certificate because the single-family residential zoning would not allow them to have a parking area there.
So there'd be parking on both sides of those existing houses?
No, they're wanting, they're wanting to establish a parking lot right here.
Right, but to the west of that lot, there are two houses sitting there?
They're not proposing to build any kind of parking lot or anything here. They're proposing-
So just, oh no, okay.
They have an application to build a parking lot here, which we're not able to approve because the property's not zoned appropriately.
Is that a house or a business on the other side of that street, to the east?
I think it's a combination, but it was primarily a residence.
Mr. Andrew, what would be the impact, if any, on those single-family residences by changing the zoning to U? Because I know in the past where we've looked at kind of mixed areas of commercial versus single-family developments, and I'm thinking specifically over adjacent to North Ohio, we deliberately didn't make any wholesale changes because of the effect that being zoned commercial would have on the people who had individual residences and like their ability to get, to sell their houses and to get, you know, financing from a bank for residents located in a commercial zoning. I mean, does this have any ramifications on-
To a degree, the same thing would apply here. In 2010, when the comprehensive plan was adopted and the Planning Commission, City Commission, looked at this area based on the ownership and based on the plans that St. John's had at the time, this whole area ceased to be shown as future residential and was shown as public, semi-public. If you, if we did a follow-up or we initiated a change to make all of this here university instead of residential, it could potentially impact some of them in terms of obtaining mortgages or things of that nature if it made them non-conforming. And so as we talked about Prospect and Woodland and those streets over there, as we explained that, and we run into that from time to time, that if a lender learns that a residence is a non-conforming use as far as zoning, and then if it burned down, it couldn't be built back, that tends to suppress the willingness of lenders to lend money on a house that can't be rebuilt if it was damaged or destroyed. So that is the reason why we sometimes have the hodgepodge pattern because we don't want to create a disadvantage for people who are trying to finance or refinance or there's just a concern that lenders have about making loans on non-conforming properties.
Thank you.
So have these owners spoken, or have they had any opinions they've expressed towards that particular potential complication of the rezoning?
They have not. We posted a sign on the property and sent letters to all those owners, but we did not receive any response from anyone pro or con. Somewhat, this owner of this residence here complained about all the vehicles being parked here, and that generated a notice and a violation notice to the campus that kind of started this all. But that individual, although notified, did not provide any input at the hearing or ahead of the hearing as to how they felt about the zoning change, so.
And to be clear, all the houses are still maintaining their current zoning. They're not included in the rezoning of those three separate areas. That's what we're pursuing, the three separate areas.
That's why it looks like this because it is, it is the properties that St. John's Military School purchased and then cleared the houses off of. And so it's only those lots that are vacant and have no improvements on them.
So it basically puts the squeeze on the remaining residential properties.
It does. But of the original 15 homes, there's only the six that are left. And that's, that is the, that is really your role is to see how you think the area is trending. And if you think that it's, if you believe it's a residential area that's more suitable for residential use than for uses associated with the campus, then that would indicate that the request should not be approved. If you see the property is being more closely related to supporting the campus, then that would be a reason to support the application.
Well, the bigger the campus gets, I mean, it becomes a self-fulfilling prophecy. I mean, if those six houses are still being lived in, it's in an area town where I would imagine that those people have lived in those houses for decades, they're probably family homes. Now, why they didn't respond to the notices, I can't answer. But it doesn't give them much protection. I guess I'm still trying to figure out what that is to the east. But from an aerial view, in that northeast corner of that intersection there, it's just, I don't know if anyone is familiar with that intersection.
That's a larger home that's been used for some commercials. It's maybe been used-
Ms. Mayor?
Yes?
Lauren Dreskal, Director of Community Development Services. I think one thing to your point, Commissioner Davis, is the larger lot in the middle that's been a football field, the parking lot to the far right, have been used by the university district or by St. John's with those houses there for quite some time. So if the concept of a university district is these properties are part of this bigger whole, the neighbors are aware that these have been used as part of the campus. And one of the reasons I think it's worth supporting, bringing these into that, is it does say upfront, rather than kind of having these pulled out and zoned residential, that these really do belong to the school. Because I think what's worth is buying one of these houses, having it zoned residential, and then moving in and realizing, actually, it's being used as a football field or part of the campus. So by bringing it all back in and putting it as part of the university district, I think it makes it much more clear how those are really being used and intended. So I think from a perspective of the current neighbors and being surprised that these things may go in there, particularly that far-right lot has been kind of often again off on parking lot for quite some time.
You know, I have to wonder, I know that they received notice, but sometimes I wonder if they understand from the content of the notice, in particular, the gentleman who complained about the property being used as a proper lot, does he understand from the content of the notice that it's now going to be a permanent parking lot that he was concerned about? So I, and I don't know what you do about that. I mean, the notice is, you know, it's designed to lay out the basic facts. If you want to go into every possibility that might happen to that property, you know, I mean, that's, I guess, what this hearing is for. But I do wonder if they fully understand what some of the implications might be or if they're going to be calling- if they're going to be calling the Community Development Department and saying, you know, there's a, there's a lot of equipment parked here, and, and we tell them, oh, it's been rezoned, so that's what you can expect from now on. You know, and I don't know how to fix that. I, I'm just, you know, that's a concern.
Particularly if it's, you know, buses and trucks.
What I have about any of these things, when we change the use of a property, is if the full implications of that change in use is, you know, make manifest to the people who are affected by it.
The uses, those have not been re, how long ago were those homes torn down? Those haven't, those lots haven't been used as residential for a significant amount of time, isn't that correct?
Homes were purchased and the lots, and that were cleared about, um, between 15 and 20 years ago. And so the, it was 2006, which would be 14 years ago, that the Planning Commission held a public hearing about converting this into a, a football field. And so these are actually the drawings that the Planning Commission reviewed to make that determination. So we also had a proposal in the area north of this that was trying to establish a paintball range for the military school, because they own the property north of that. And there was a property over here that was owned by the city of Salina, and the city deeded that over to St. John's Military School, which had owned it originally. So the military school owns this property here, and they own this property here, and they own this, and they own this, and they own down to here, so.
Mr. Andrew, the gentleman in the north that was complaining about that being a parking lot, there's actually a, a half of a lot there between the St. John's Military School property and his. Is that, is that zoned residential also, and, but that's not owned by either one of them, I take it?
I don't believe it's owned by either...
Yeah.
...one of them. This is not owned by the military school.
Right, that's what I'm saying, there's a, there's a, that lot, whatever that is, the north half of that is owned by somebody other than St. John's.
That is correct.
Or St. Francis now.
Can you move that screen down just a little further south? So which, so St. John's only owns the...
The southern, south half of that.
This portion here, they own the south 158 feet of that lot.
So a parking lot would, or could, or would be put in that one corner lot then?
Yes.
And this parking lot could hold buses and trucks, or whatever they wanted to put on it?
They, was used off and on intermittently by St. John's Military School for that purpose, but never, never properly zoned, and never properly approved for that. So that's, the present owners are trying to go through the right steps so that they can legally establish a parking area there.
And by, by doing this, then it's, you, they're required to put in the buffers and so on and so forth to protect that property from the residential properties to the west.
Yeah, I guess I'm still just...
I think that's a flag-shaped lot to the north. I think, I think that joined that driveway.
Does he join? I can't tell, I could...
It's Mr. Dan Pestinger that owns that property. I believe he owns the flag-shaped lot.
So he owns the south, the north half of that lot then? Okay. Couldn't tell if there's a boundary line there or not.
Okay, any other questions for staff? Are there any?
I guess...
Well, just, when notices are sent out, if you have, are these sent, returned, requested, I mean, a receipt requested, or?
No, they are not. They're sent regular mail, and we post a sign on the property. And, I mean, in response to that, all I can say is that we do the same type of notice for every case, and in some cases, we get a whole lot of public response, and in some cases, we get no public response.
So there has been a sign on that...
The outreach is the same.
So there's been a sign on the corner lot?
There's been a sign there, and we mailed notice to all the owners that weren't St. John's, including this owner across the street over here. So we, we go out 200 feet, and sometimes people just aren't interested. They, Mr. France could be correct that they may or may not fully understand, but we, in the case of Mr. Hill's rezoning that was just heard, we did the same notice, we posted signs, we sent letters, and there was no public response, pro or con, to his request. And sometimes that just happens, that there's no response.
Well, he probably didn't have six houses around, I mean, it's, his was basically commercial anyway. Any comments from the public? Okay, if not, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mayor Hoppick? I move, or, I'm sorry, are you ready for a motion, or are there other questions or comments?
Yes.
I'm sorry, didn't mean to jump in there. A move that we approve on first reading, ordinance number 20-11026.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to concur with the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission approving ordinance number 20-11026 rezoning three tracts to U, university. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
That passes 4 to 1. Do we want to take a break before we move into the next one, or?
Oh, please.
Okay, I thought that. We will take a, about a seven, eight-minute break. We'll be back in here a quarter to 7.